I'd like to get this started. My name is Alan Cutre. I'm Mayor District of Chatwin. And we'd like to welcome Mike Bernier to Chatwin. And he's been the biggest supporter of districts and communities in the southeast, northeast, and around BC. He just isn't here in the southeast that Mike participates in all of BC. So that's part of what he does. And that's what we do here at the Peace. We share our knowledge. And what we do here is we pass it to others. And I'd just like to say that Mike, being partisan, I think that's the word of the day.
Sure.
Anyway, we welcome all parties, right? Doesn't matter who's in power, United, Social Credit, NDP.
You're dating yourself now, Alan.
NDP, right?
The good old days are so good.
Well, but tonight, we've got Mike. And thank you for helping us out, Mike. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Yeah, thanks.
This is not a goodbye, right?
No. Well, I hope not.
I'll give it over to you.
Sure. How about, before we get started, I know one of the big things that obviously is facing Chatwin, and we'll deal with the elephant in the room right away, let's talk about the fire initial attack. Because I know there's a lot of people who have talked to me on social media. One of the things, before I get into more deeper conversation, I just want, while we have the mayor here, I wanted to flag this one because obviously, it's something that's really important to the community. For obvious reasons, we've seen over the last couple of years specifically, the amount of issues around forest fires in the area, the impacts it's had, not only directly in Chatwin, but close proximity to, and how important it is to have people ready and able and trained to attack those. So I think a lot of people know, we have councillors here as well. Mayor Council sent a letter off to myself and to the Ministry of Forests, saying that, you know, this is not acceptable.
Minister Ralston.
Minister Ralston, yeah. That this isn't acceptable. I followed up with my own letter as well. I also stood up, for those of you who follow me on Facebook, you might have seen some of it, but I also stood up in debates in the legislature and went after Minister Ralston on this specific issue. He would not give me a lot of concrete answers, but he committed to writing back within two weeks to council, which he did.
I heard from Mike Bernier that he said he was going to call Mayor Cutre because he knew.
Yeah.
I got a letter. It was disappointing then.
Oh, from Ralston, you mean?
From Ralston, yes.
Yeah, sorry you said me.
Well, you told me that.
Oh, yeah, I saw. Yeah, sorry.
So there's a little bit of a...
Yeah, and this is one of the challenges, right? So the minister said, oh, don't worry, I'm on top of this. I'll phone the mayor. We'll straighten this out. And it was, what, a week or two later, they actually mailed a letter, emailed a letter, basically saying, sorry, we're not changing anything, right? I'm paraphrasing, obviously.
Correct, yep.
Now, have you heard anything else since?
Yes, I since went to a forestry conference in Vancouver. And the opportunity was there to talk with the minister. And I quoted the letter of 20 minutes to half hour that would take to get them, the initial attack team, from there to Chatwin. And I was quite disappointed. I says, you know, you signed the letter stating that it would take a half hour, half hour to get to Chatwin. And first of all, just a little bit of background on Dawson Creek. They don't have a helicopter base there. So they'd have to call them from Fort St. John.
Yep.
But if they got on it right away, they'd have to call them, get them moving. So it takes a little while. Pilots, everybody that has a certificate, including the truck drivers, they have to inspect their truck. So imagine inspecting helicopters so that you can get in there. So anyway, you'd have time there, and then to get to Dawson, pick up all the equipment and the people to get here. So that, and I says, and that's what I relayed to the minister. And the minister was, said, well, that's the information I got. So after I had talked to him, I've since got a couple of invitations to meet. And one of them was Shane Greensley. He's the fire, what do you call him? Fire guy for Forest Fire Service. He does the Prince George area, and that's including us. So he included me in his response, and so did one of the deputy ministers, I believe. And there's a new fellow aboard, Mercier.
Yeah, Andrew, yeah.
Andrew Mercier. He's helping with forestry. So I chatted with him, and he's going to look into it. And so I invited him to Chatwin. When I go to these conferences, I invite every minister that I see, come to Chatwin. You're invited to come and see what you have in Chatwin. Come see our forest, come see our community, see what you talk about when you say it's going to take 20 minutes to 30 minutes. So that's the stuff that happens when I go there. And I do that with the opposition to the United Party, and they came down. There were seven of them here, I believe, last summer.
Yep.
So they went around town checking it out. So on this initial attack team, there was another word, another title that they used, forward attack. So they want to replace the initial, it's called N I F A C. That's the Northern Initial Attack Team. So they're going to replace it with the forward attack. And Greensley from Prince George said they were moving two double wides to Chatwin. And he did not know about the letter that Minister Ralston sent to us. So he sent him the information, and that's why he got back to me when I was in Vancouver. So with that, I talked to another fellow. This is a fellow in Kamloops, Rod, I believe his name was. And he says, yeah, okay, we're going to get a hold of this, so this is what's going to happen. So we had a chat with him on Monday through the telephone. And he was quite positive that he would be sending the forward team. They already have firefighters here, so we're not worried about now. But it just looks bad that they send me a letter stating that Chatwin, we don't... Nothing matters. That's what I told him. That's my personal opinion. It says, I don't matter. And the rest of the citizens around Chatwin don't matter. Anybody else around the surrounding communities don't matter. I said, half hour. I mean, things burn pretty quick once they get going. So the positive stuff is that they've got two ministers on it, including Minister Ralston. So everything that Mike gets, because we all understand that he's in the southeast. He's got all the communities in the southeast. But I, for myself, and for everybody that lives in Chatwin, and every place the fire service protects, this is where we live. This is our community. And that's why it's important that they talk to us. Not talk to Mike about our initial attack team, which is fair for Mike to hear it. But it's important for us to hear that they're worried about us, not 20 minutes, half hour later, when things are gone, but so, Victoria.
Yeah, there you go. No pun intended?
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm not sure. Can you hear me if I just talk like this? You can? Okay, because for some reason, this isn't working perfectly well. And it's even a marshal. Go figures. Anyway, thank you, everyone, for coming on. Thank you, your worship, for starting us off with that. And I wanted to make sure we talked about that one. Maybe I'll add to it a little bit before I get into a little bit more of my conversation, and then we'll start having a dialogue or questions, whatever I can do to help answer. I just want to finish off on this one specific topic first. I know, I'm not sure who it is. Somebody in town has started up a petition as well. I'm not sure if that person was here. They said they were going to be. But one of the things I've offered as well, sign the petition. As the mayor said, it's important to show that this is important to us in the southeast and Chatwin. Because when I stood up in the legislature, I was the one that actually pushed back and said, when the minister said, oh, it's only a half an hour helicopter ride from Dawson Creek. And as Alan said, well, that's fine, but there's no helicopter. You're calling it from Canadian helicopters in Fort St. John. By the time you do all that, I could probably ride my horse from Dawson Creek to Chatwin faster than waiting for the helicopter to come. So that's why it's important. There's not a lot of forest fires in Dawson Creek because there's not a lot of trees there. This is where we need the people, right? That's why it's important. And so I just wanted to flag that, you know, your mayor and council have been very passionate, very vocal on this, representing you as well. And one of the things that I've offered to do, if you can help me, whoever has the petition, and we'll make sure we get that afterwards to me, because I can actually, instead of just mailing the petition off and it going into the vacuum, I can actually stand up in the legislature, in debates, right in front of the minister, on the record, and present it. Then there's no way he can back away from not knowing about it. I can do it right on TV, right there. So I'm not sure if there's more questions on that topic, but if there are, we can wrap around to it later. But I just want to thank all of you for coming, first of all. I'm home this week, and so I thought it was really important because we're in session right now. We're halfway through our session in Victoria. We have another month, five weeks left in Victoria, and this was our break week. And I always try to make sure on my break weeks that I'm out, you know, talking with people, listening to the concerns, to make sure when I'm representing you in Victoria, I have, you know, the best feel for what the issues are as possible on your behalf. And I know there's so many issues that we're facing, and we'll try to tackle some of them tonight. But I'm looking to you as well, at what's important to you, to make sure that I hopefully can give you some answers and address some of those gaps, and then make sure I'm bringing that to Victoria. So maybe I'll just kind of give a little bit of the lay of the land, first of all. As I said, we're in the session right now. This is the last session that we will have this year because it's an election year. So we only have about another month in Victoria to try to get our points across. As you can appreciate, and I think I talked about this when I did this town hall like this in Tumley Ridge last night, don't be surprised if a lot of my answers are political. I am a politician representing all of you. But it's also a reminder that these decisions that are being made right now in Victoria that we're debating are political decisions, right? So things that are affecting us daily right now, a lot of those that impact us are because of political decisions. So maybe I'll start with one of them that's hitting us really big right now, and that's around affordability. And you look right now, in the last four or five years under this new government, we have 32 newer increased taxes in the province of British Columbia. That's hitting all of us in our pocketbooks, and nothing more than the one that's really front and center right now, than carbon tax. And you've heard a lot of us, I just want to spend a few moments talking about that because I've been out there saying, we have to get rid of carbon tax. We have to cancel carbon tax. I want people to understand, though, anybody who says that they're going to get rid of carbon tax right now doesn't understand. You can't. Carbon tax is run by the federal government, okay? But the province of British Columbia, I'll just give you a little bit of history so you understand this one for those that don't know it. In 2008, when carbon tax originally came in, the province of British Columbia had its own carbon tax at $10 a ton. Gordon Campbell at the time brought that in and froze it, and it was revenue neutral. And it gets very convoluted and confusing trying to explain revenue neutral. But the easiest way to say is, at that time, all the money that was coming into government from carbon tax had to go back out in supports. It went back out to lower taxes. It went back out to grants. It went out to a myriad of supports for people. In 2017, the NDP came in and changed the law. The law actually was, it had to be revenue neutral. The new law says it's at government's prerogative what they do with that money. So now it goes into general revenue. So general revenue means it goes into Victoria's pockets, and then the politicians decide where it goes now, rather than it going back to you. The reason why you can't get rid of carbon tax is the federal government supersedes all provinces. If you get rid of it, Alberta would have done it already. Rob Ford would have got rid of it already. You can't. In the province of British Columbia, if we got rid of the carbon tax today, because right now we have our own. We're the only province that has our own jurisdiction for carbon tax. If we tried to get rid of carbon tax under federal law, within 24 hours, their carbon tax comes in, over top of it. The one advantage, if we can call it an advantage, all the money collected in carbon tax in British Columbia right now stays in British Columbia. If we stopped it and the federal government imposed it, which they would under law, all the money then goes to Ottawa. Doesn't stay in British Columbia. What British Columbia does have control of, when we talk about the affordability thing, and carbon tax specifically, is where they impose that. So you've probably heard me and others out there talking about, we can take carbon tax off of home heating for your natural gas bills. We can take it off of the agricultural sector. We can take that and the government tax off of gasoline at the pumps. Province of British Columbia has control over that. So we put a motion forward here not too long ago in the legislature to do just that, to get rid of carbon tax in those areas that I just mentioned. Because that's where we have control of it in British Columbia, where we're allowed to without the federal government imposing. Unfortunately, because we're in opposition, we don't have the majority. The NDP do. For their reasons, they voted that down. Not only did they vote it down, carbon tax is now going from $10 up to $65. April 1st, it just went up. And the government just announced in their three-year fiscal plan, they want to raise it to $165. So think of that. When it first came in, it was $10. They want to put it up to $165. There is a reason why almost every politician in Canada is saying, this is not affordable. We need to get rid of carbon tax. The only two that seem to have their heads buried in the sand on this one is Trudeau and Adrian Dix. Sorry, David Eby, thank you. I'm so used to dealing with Dix on health issues. And so for some reason, they don't agree. Not only do they not want to get rid of it, they want to raise it. The last poll that we did, about 75, 80% of British Colombians specifically say it's time to get rid of carbon tax. I would probably argue in the north, it's 99% of the people want to get rid of carbon tax. Because it's no longer what it started. It has now become something that's unaffordable, and it's just turned into, frankly, another tax grab. It's not doing what it was intended to do. In fact, the NDP right now, what they said is, no, they want to keep, you know, steamrolling ahead on this and raising the carbon tax to try to incentivize people to use less petroleum products. I don't know about you, but we don't have a lot of options up here, but turning our heat on when it's minus 40, which is, for most people, natural gas. We don't have a choice but to fill up our pickup trucks when we're going to work around our communities. And we can stop that. We don't have high-speed transit. We don't have the ability to have everybody on electric vehicles in this altruistic fairy tale world that the NDP think we live in sometimes. So that is why on the carbon tax, you know, hopefully I explained that a little bit. And if, does anybody have questions maybe on carbon tax? Maybe I'll go here. And I, sorry, I just want to say, sorry, sir. I will kind of help repeat the question a little bit because, thanks to our friends at Peace FM, who are recording it, because, you know, a lot of people said, please record it to them so we can share it. So I might repeat questions back if you can make them a little short.
Do you think about this carbon tax?
Yes.
Why is it propane is clean burning fuel, it's all foot carbon footprint on the environment, and we got to pay carbon tax to heat our homes? And not only that, I was going to start with a business, but because of the carbon tax, I can't do it. Because I thought of burning propane.
Yeah, so the question was like around propane, or really, I'll say...
I mean, if they took that off propane and different products that are environmental safe, that would help pensioners out a hell of a lot more than what you think.
Yeah, no, 100%. So again, talking about like propane, or even natural gas, or all these different things, and taking carbon tax off, for those that probably know, propane comes from natural gas. It's a byproduct, just like, you know, it's part of the methane chain there. And so when you look at, the government just constitutes all of those things as carbon emitting fuels. Just like our gasoline, gasoline, they're calling it carbon emitting fuels.
So now all their experts, they're not even an expert anymore.
Yeah, there's not a lot of experts out there for some of these things, for sure. But I mean, the whole point, though, is on this, is it's really about where we can change the narrative around the carbon tax, how it's imposed. And that's why we said, we can take it off of natural gas, propane, gasoline, all of those, what they're calling the carbon emitting fuels, from a residential perspective, for sure. You know, we had a woman last night who shared with me her gas bill, and, you know, it was something like $100 in carbon tax. So you can imagine, for a senior, or anybody for that matter, who might be on a fixed income, that's a huge chunk out of the pocketbook that can actually be impacting you right away if we got rid of it. Long story short, the government doesn't agree with me or with you on this one. What their plan is, they think if they keep raising the tax on carbon tax, you will just stop using the product. I wish I was joking, but that's what they say in Victoria, that you will just stop using natural gas to heat your house or propane.
But it is a good way to get rid of an idiot, to get rid of both socialist governments in Ottawa and here. Because they are socialist governments. You won't tell me they're not.
No, I won't argue with you one bit. But, so that is the challenge we're faced with right now. We presently have a government that doesn't agree. So if you're an NDP supporter, good on you. But for those that aren't, obviously, this is something that's really hitting home for a lot of people, because it's something that we need to change. And it was something we can change today. Under law, we can take that carbon tax off today if we wanted to. We put that motion forward in the House. The government voted it down. And as I said, not only did they vote it down, they actually told us that they're going to be using that as part of their election platform going forward this year. They truly think that by raising the carbon tax to $165, that that's what we want, and what I guess the environmental groups want. But I don't know if there's many people in the room here that would agree to that. I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but I'm pretty sure there's not too many people in this room that agree with that. So one of the big things on that is just that we've been pushing back on is really that affordability stuff. So whether it's the carbon tax, you know, whether it's the gasoline tax, whether it's all of the other things that have been added on that are affecting businesses specifically, which brings me to another one that we've been really pushing back on, which is called the employer's health tax. For those that don't know, this is really hurting a lot of our businesses as well. The government, a couple of years back, got rid of MSP and said, look how great we are. We got rid of MSP. But what they did was they actually just changed the name and who's paying it. And they called it the employer's health tax, which now hits all small businesses instead. And it has really penalized a lot of small businesses. When you see the lineup of people that come and visit with us in Ottawa, oh, sorry, in Victoria on this one, it's, all the small businesses are front and center complaining about this one. One local business in this region, a fast food group, told me it actually made a difference of $1 million a year to their bottom line, that they had to write a check to the government, that they never had to do before. So you can imagine, for a company that's employing as many people as they can, that really doesn't have, especially if it's a franchise, that can't do a lot with raising their product price, there's a lot of businesses will look at that and say, how do I stay in business? It's not economical anymore. So a lot of groups are pushing back on that one as well. One of the things, excuse me, sorry, I've been talking a lot this week. And I will, I want to open it up really to questions because I want to make sure, whatever your concerns are, we touch on. But maybe one other one I'll touch on before that, because I know a lot of people, and I come out here to Chatwin all the time and meet with people. It's not often I do a format like this. It's usually smaller groups, or meeting with clubs, and, you know, maybe at the rec center. But I appreciate you coming out tonight because then we can try to maybe get a little bit more holistic on some of the issues and answers. But the other one that I hear from a lot, obviously, is the hospital. Diversion, healthcare. I mean, that is a huge one that comes to my office, I hate to say, almost daily. I meet with Northern Health as often as I can, don't always get the answers I want. They're not happy with me right now. I did put a public call out saying that I think it's time we do an audit of Northern Health, and all health authorities for that matter. Because the government, when I left as a cabinet minister, we were spending $15 billion a year in healthcare in the province of British Columbia. We're now spending $30 billion a year in healthcare. I challenge anybody to put up their hand if they think healthcare outcomes have gotten better. So this is one of the things we always talk about, is what are we getting for our money? You know, what are the outcomes that we're getting? And if Adrian Dix wants to stand up and say, you know, we're spending twice as much money, but there's no wait times, no diversions, we got all the staff we need, we have all the doctors and nurses we need, then I'd say, okay, fine, it's working. But it's not. We have gone in the last seven years from some of the best health outcomes in Canada to unfortunately, some of the worst now in British Columbia. To the point where you might have even heard in the news a couple of months ago, where we are shipping people to the United States for cancer treatment because we can't keep up anymore in the province of British Columbia. There's a whole bunch of reasons why, and they're not easy to fix necessarily. But one of the things we need to do, first of all, is do a better job around our recruitment and our retention. And actually, I always try to reverse that and talk about retention and recruitment. Because I look at the people that we have in our community here in Chatwin right now, and I've been very fortunate enough to go up to the hospital and meet with many of the nurses that work here and the few doctors that we're fortunate to have. And we need to make sure we do everything we can to keep them as well. Because they're getting burnt out, and they're getting tired. And the last thing they want to see is diversions. The last thing they want to see is the hospital shut down. I was in there one day, and one of the nurses had just finished an extra shift and agreed to stay on in the back room to babysit one of the other nurse's kids so she could come in and work her shift because she couldn't find daycare. And without her coming in and that other nurse babysitting, they would have been on diversion that night. You know, so they're doing a great job. The challenge is, is trying to recruit more people to our smaller northern communities. And Chatwin, Tumley Ridge, Dawson Creek, even Fort St. John, where the whole peace region, the whole north for that matter, is really struggling on recruiting our healthcare professionals. And there's a lot of reasons for that as well. But I think this is where we can all work collectively. We need to do a good job of selling our communities, selling the region. And the reason being is, when I used to be the Shadow Ministry for Health in one of my previous roles, and I was at UBC, and I went and met with a bunch of, well, kids to me, but a bunch of young adults that were graduating as physicians, trying to convince them to come up north. And they were pretty open and blunt with me. And they said, you know, I could come up to Chatwin and make $400,000 a year, have to work six days a week, also work in the hospital, also do all the other different aspects, and be on call 24/7. And, or I can go to Kelowna, and I can work in a clinic four days a week, make $300,000 a year, and work Monday to Friday from 8 to 4:30, and not be on call, and not have to do all the other stuff. So the mindset, that's what we're competing against. Which is why you hear and see that we get a lot of foreign-trained doctors that come up to our region, and we're so blessed to have them come up because, you know, they offer some amazing services for us. But there's a challenge with this as well. When a doctor, let's say from South Africa or Nigeria, that we're working on, we have some contracts now with some doctors from Iran, when they want to come to British Columbia, they have to sign a contract and say they'll come up and do rural medicine in a northern community. And it's, depending on which program they sign on to, it's a two-year contract or a three-year contract. Once they finish that contract, they're now licensed completely with College of Physicians, can go anywhere in British Columbia. So that's why I talk about the retention, because we see that rotation all the time. Dawson Creek, we're losing six doctors in Dawson Creek in the next four months because their contracts are up, and they're all moving down to Chilliwack and Abbotsford to start practices. So then it starts the new rotation, okay? How do we get new foreign-trained doctors? Where we need to do better is, not just on that, but we have so many local people, I think, that we could help support get into this field. And I know we have some here in Chatwin as well. We met with some people, met with the Filipino community in Dawson Creek. I don't know if you knew this, just in Dawson Creek alone, we had 29 Filipino Canadians that are foreign-trained doctors and nurses that are working in Tim Hortons, or in 7-Eleven, or wherever they're working. Because they can't get certified here in British Columbia because of the way the program works. So I went and asked them. I said, how do we get you trained? And they said, well, I'd love to get trained. I looked into it, but it's going to take me a year and a half. And that's, this one nurse that talked to me was a 10-year certified cardiac nurse, working in Tim Hortons. And she said, the problem is, it would take me a year and a half to do all that upgrading. I can't afford to take a year and a half off work. So this is where I went back to my team and said, we have to be creative here. We're willing to do, you know, eliminate people's student loans if they move up north. Why aren't we doing something similar and saying, if they already live here, and they're already committed, and they love our communities, and they're going to stay, why can't we advance and come up with a program to maybe help them get that training, get certified, so they can work in our hospitals or in our clinics? So it's something we're looking at. Throw Adrian Dix under the bus again. He doesn't totally agree with this. But I think it's a huge opportunity, because we have people who have chosen to move to our communities, who are passionate, who want to stay here, become Canadians, be part of our communities. And they're devoted to our communities, and they can be part of the solution.
I believe that acquisition retention is an important part of it. But you know who loves the north? Mike? Northerners. And I feel like, and I'm experienced with what you're saying, but I really feel like some program between Northern Health and Northern Lights College to get the training happening right off... some program between Northern Health and Northern Lights College to get the training happening right off the bat. Because I believe that training and retention are even more important than the acquisition. Because I think if you can get a northerner trained, they actually just want to stay and work here. And my son is in the trades program. So, so many young people are going into the trades nice and early, yeah, grade 10. And a couple of years postgraduate, they are ready to work. So how is it that the trades, we all love our trades and the industry in the north, but how is it that the trades are more important than the education for the healthcare? Because isn't that what's keeping us alive and keeping our people safe? And why have we elevated the trades programs above healthcare? And why do we not have that program?
Yeah, well, so not to contradict you, we do have the programs and I think we have to do a better job talking about it. So what I mean by that is, first of all, those pendulum swing. We were always, we didn't have a lot of people in trades and there was a large emphasis on getting people trained in the trades. But there's a couple of things we have up north that don't get the attention I think it deserves. So Northern Lights College in Dawson Creek Campus and Fort St. John both offer the nursing program. Now, the nursing program in Fort St. John just got added in a partnership with UNBC. They're just finishing the first year right now and I think it's 14 or 15 people a year. I stand to be corrected on how many fit into that. As the mayor knows, there's also a partnership with the regional district and local communities with the Northern Medical Program Trust. We actually started that back when I was in the regional district, when I was the mayor of Dawson Creek. We actually started the Northern Medical Program Trust where we all collectively put money in, hundreds of thousands of dollars to help fund a medical program at UNBC. Here's the challenge, is the criteria around acceptance into the medical program there is not exclusive to northerners. So I didn't know that. And so I found out quite recently that if they're allowing 12 people in the program to be trained to become physicians, 10 of them might be from Vancouver or Surrey that qualified and they're in there getting trained and only two from the north.
It's still not that hard, that's changed in the last two years. You mean that change? If you come to it, if you're signed up in a norm, yeah, we will not accept anybody else to help. If we don't fill all those positions, then we will ask for a reason.
Well, thank you for clarifying that because last time when I went and toured it, that was not the way it was. And so that was a big problem, right? That we wanted to make sure we, to the counselor's point, if we can train people who are already here. One of the things, not a show of hands, I don't know if there's any nurses in here. I met recently, just a week ago, with Nurses Union. And we had a really good conversation on this because they're frustrated as well. But they also acknowledged to me that they're part of the problem. And by that I mean, they said they want to come up with a better way of messaging what it's like to be a nurse. Because anytime you watch a commercial on TV, especially at contract time, the Nurses Union always puts out commercials, "We want to raise because our job's so horrible. Look how hard it is to be a nurse. Who would want to do our job? We're lucky to be here, so pay us more." So take the contract negotiation out, the message wasn't suiting what they were trying to do. And they've acknowledged that and said that they want to try to change that up because they know, we know we need more people in the profession. So it's talking about how great of a job it is, how do we get more people in? So anyway, so to your point though, 100%, if we can convince our kids at a young age that this is a, getting into healthcare is important and it's a job they could hold their whole life and do, that we should be doing that. And what I'll also take to your point is I'll go back and ask my colleagues and I'll even ask Northern Lights College because we worked really hard to have what you were referring to, the dual credit program, where you could get started in grade 11 or 12 into a field or a profession and you kind of get get advanced on those years, you get accredited for those years of service like in trades. And so how do we do that maybe in healthcare as well to kind of align people in that? And I think that's where you're going a little bit.
Absolutely, you can be an act, teachers into the group.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So my guess, we've got some issues. What's the answer to solve some of these problems? We've talked about what's going on with the healthcare, with trades, with nurses and healthcare. So what is the United Party going to do when they come, the party to say, we're going to make a law, we're going to have policy? What does that, what's it going to look like?
So there's, thanks, Alan. I mean, I wasn't going to get too political, but since you opened up the door. So obviously, as we get closer to an election, we'll be talking a lot more about platform, policy, what we'll do. But one of the things we've talked about already and the obvious is opening up more seats for training. Right now, we don't have, like, all of our seats in our universities are full and we're not training enough people. So we need to work, first of all, with UBC, SFU, and Kelowna has one, they're looking at a facility in Surrey, that we actually open that up and we actually stop restricting how many people we train a year. Because we know we need more, we're not keeping up. So we need to invest in the post-secondary as a major part of it. And then also, we've talked about Kevin Falcon, our leader, he was very passionate about this, is how do we eliminate all that red tape? So people who have the, who are foreignly trained can come in here and get certified and work. It's not about compromising the training, it's just about making sure that we get people trained and in those positions. Alberta just did that. And I'm fearful, like always, we lose people to Alberta. So we want to make sure we have a similar policy here. And I mean, and you know how this goes, as we get closer to the election, we'll start rolling out more of our platform. Those are some of the things we've talked about already. Some of the ones that we've also talked about is really around mental health and addictions and trying to help people who are struggling in that area. Because one of the big challenges we have up here is we don't have the supports in our health system for people who are struggling on our streets. I don't know, and I haven't had a good talk with you on this, I don't know how prevalent it is here in Chatwin, but I see it daily by my office in Dawson Creek. And it's, here's the challenge that I've found with this, if I can go down this one for a few moments, if you allow me. The problem is, we have a government that has decided it's okay to decriminalize drugs and for government to supply drugs. But there's no talk about how do we help people get off of drugs. And that's where I think we're failing people, right? And that's why you've probably heard me out there being against decriminalization, being against safe supply. I've said, what, you know, what happened to the days we say there's no such thing as safe supply? I guess for people who are struggling, I talked to some and they say there is. But we've lost the narrative of don't do drugs at all, especially for our youth. Now, for people who are already struggling, how do we help them? And here's the challenge that's affecting everybody now, that drugs have changed, right? These synthetic drugs that people use now, you know, heroin a little bit, but your methamphetamines, your fentanyls, these are serious brain altering drugs. You know, I remember growing up in, you know, in Dawson Creek, when I was younger, it was pot. And the people that were struggling with alcohol on the streets. Getting their little $4 bottle of sherry in the brown paper bag and those were our local street people. Now it's people, I talked to a physician about this and he said, here's the challenge with something like fentanyl. The first time you might be okay, the second time you're addicted for life. It is that addictive and is that destructive. I shared a story last night, for instance, and I try to make sure that I talk about this to make sure we have empathy on this one as well. Because I always say, you know, put up your hand if when you grew up, growing up, you said, I hope I end up on the streets as an addict with mental health issues. You know, we don't wish that on anybody. There are people who have different struggles in life that have took, taken them down that path. And we need to figure out how to help them. And we don't have those supports here, which is why you'll hear me talk about that. Like, one of the gentlemen that I met in Dawson Creek, he's been on the streets now for about two years. But he worked out in the oil patch. He got hurt, hurt his back. He was given some hydromorphone, a bunch of other pain meds. He started getting addicted to them, that gravitated into other harder drugs, next thing you know, he's on fentanyl. Loses his family, loses his house and he's on the streets in Dawson Creek. This is not the scenarios that you hear some people talk about of we're busing all these people in from Vancouver and they're all on our streets. That's not true. It's not true. You might hear it on social media, you might see it on Facebook, it's not true. Right now, and I met with the group this afternoon in Dawson Creek that runs all the programs there. There's 52 people right now that are classified as homeless in Dawson Creek. I'm sharing those stories because that's what I know. Of those 52, 48 of them have lived in Dawson Creek 10 years or more. So these are somebody's parents or kids, and a lot of them are under the age of 30. That people know that went through their school system and whatever life challenges led them into the scenario they're in. So I get really, I take it personally when I see people saying, ah, let them die or bust them out. And we hear those things all the time. And I think, I think as a society, we have to help people who are struggling. And then we also have to help people to make sure they don't end up in that same situation.
Like, I have, I have to stop here for a second because I'm getting angry.
Okay, I hope I'm not angry.
Yes, you are. Because we didn't have this problem until our federal and our provincial government started giving free drugs. When you're getting free drugs, why wouldn't you be taking them? And it's our taxpaying dollar that is paying for these drugs. And you just talked about the carbon tax and everything else, but they didn't ever say how much they put out for the free drugs every year to drug addicts. They're not giving them to the seniors that have paid taxes their whole lives or these people that have worked harder than hard and, yeah.
No, I, so if it helps, I'm just as angry as you because we actually put a motion forward in the House. We voted against, well, let me change this. We never voted against decriminalization because the government never brought it forward as legislation. They did it as a policy change behind closed doors and announced it. So I never had a chance to vote against it. So we put our own motion forward at the beginning of this spring session to say, we want to get rid of decriminalization and bring in the supports. And the NDP said no. So you completely nailed it. And that's one of our frustrations is, so it's the way that drugs are being used. So for people who are struggling right now, they don't want the free drugs, just so you know.
They're starting to trade?
That's where I was going. So what's happening is, is the government said, if you're on heroin, go see your doctor and get a prescription and you can go to the local pharmacy and we'll start prescribing hydromorphone for you because that's a safe alternative drug that will get you the addiction challenges that you're trying to solve, it'll help you with it. The problem is, that doesn't give them the high they're looking for, and I'm being pretty crass here, I hope you don't mind. So they're taking that 100 pills of hydromorphone or dillys or whatever they want to call them. And then they walk right out of Shoppers Drug Mart and they walk across the street and they go to their dealer and say, here you go, and they say, okay, here's your fentanyl, here's your heroin. And then that dealer now starts circulating that, and guess where it's starting to show up? In our schools. So legally, safe supplied drugs, the government is supplying, is starting to end up through that. I wish I was exaggerating, but we've had RCMP story after story over the last couple of weeks as we've been bringing attention to this issue. The government stood up and said, no, that's not happening. And now we're starting to hear different RCMP detachments come out and say, well, actually, we just raided another house and look, here's the picture. This is a known drug dealer. And how come there's Shoppers Drug Marts or London Drugs tags on all of these pills, right? It's, that's what's starting to happen and you're completely right. I have researched this a lot, this topic, and there's some good models in other parts of the world where they've helped people. But that's only when they attach decriminalization with wraparound service supports to help people. We have not done that here, we just did one piece of it, right? And that's where government, I say, has failed it. And so that's where we came out, the BC United, Kevin Falcon came out with a plan called Better Is Possible Plan, which is not about the decriminalization, but it's about having those regional support centers where the Peace Region should have a detox and wraparound service support center. Because right now, somebody that comes to my office and says, I want to get clean, I have to tell them, I'm sorry, there's a seven-week waiting list for a detox bed somewhere in British Columbia if we can get you there. Anybody who knows anybody who's an addict, within 48 hours, they'll be back on the street using. They're not waiting seven weeks to go to detox, right? So the system's not working, right? And to your point, that's why we've been pushing back on that.
I have to talk about the plan also, yeah.
So to your point, maybe I'll just finish off on, there's more questions on it. The government's not giving us a straight answer either because we're asking how much money, how much drugs? All, their only answer, every single time, and if people don't have a life and watch Question Period, that I'm in there all the time. Almost every question period for the last three weeks, we've been talking about this exact issue. Their response every time is, we as a government are worried about people, we want to get rid of the stigma. And we're like, well, but you're not. Because, and I find it up here, it's actually making it worse. Because it's really starting to polarize people rather than helping the people that need the help. And if we were helping the people that needed the help properly, then it wouldn't be creating all these issues on our street that are getting other people frustrated and upset and mad, so. So I thought somebody had a hand up, sir.
I was booked by a stuntman in the flight park and came out with some fentanyl. Now I have spent 13,000 dollars a month.
So not knowing all the specifics. Yeah, and so it depends on, obviously, what his physician signed him up for as a person with a disability or whatever. But yeah, I mean, there's, I guess there's ways out there to help people, but then there's other ways that the system's just not working too, right? So, sorry, go ahead.
There's someone to circle back to the healthcare crisis and not having staff diversions.
Yes.
You said that you have conversations with Northern Health. Has there been conversation about hiring back the thousands of healthcare workers that have been fired?
So if, for those that follow politics, I hope you all have lives and don't necessarily all follow politics. About two years ago, we put, I put a motion forward in the legislature actually to bring back all the healthcare workers that you're referring to. That got voted down. We brought it up again two weeks ago in the legislature, it got voted down again. It's, it's, there's different opinions on this. And the reason being is, I've been working with the Nurses Union on this one as well. Right now, they're going through a process in the courts to find out how that will play out because they're trying to represent the members that are no longer there. For the Peace Region, it's not going to be a savior for us because there's not a lot. Provincewide, the last number I heard is about 2,500.
I think it actually could be a savior for our hospital here because one, shortage of one RN will make the difference between diversion or not. And we do have fired staff here, so.
I'd love to hear those numbers because when I met with the nurses here, I've heard numbers and I've heard numbers from other people that didn't match, so I'd like to find out what that is. And it doesn't change the argument, I must always.
But it also affects the budget because if you're relying on agency nurses, the cost of that is like double to triple at least. And you're paying for flights and hotels and driving to pick them up from the airport, so the budget just gets a little narrow.
Oh, the, the whole idea of agency nurses is a weird one. I understand the concept of we were, okay, we have short, let's bring in agency nurses. But the way that whole system was set up, I know people who are, were nurses with Northern Health who quit and became an agency nurse. And now working right next to somebody who used to be their colleague, now they're making twice as much because they're classified as an agency nurse.
So have you had conversations with Northern Health specifically?
Yeah, we, I have. And so right now, their diversion, their topic is always about, look, we're doing everything we can to just try to fill the gaps. That's what they say to me. Northern Health has no control over the initial question of bringing back the unvaccinated workers. That's a Ministry of Health, Adrian Dix decision, not the health.
But if they advocate to that.
Yeah, the health authorities, all of the health authorities. Why, I don't know, but they're silent on this issue, completely silent. They haven't talked about it at all. I met with Northern Health this week, I think it was Tuesday. What day is today? Wednesday? Monday? It all blends before me right now. So Monday, I met with them and we talked about it again. And the answer I got was they're waiting to hear direction from the Minister of Health. So to the point about the issues and the challenges, that's one of the things, like I said at the onset, of why I think we need to really look at the budget. Look at, again, Northern Health doesn't like me when I'm out there publicly calling, saying an audit. And I'm saying, I'm not accusing them of wrongdoing, but if there's no wrongdoing, let's open the books, let's talk about it. Where's the money going? What are we doing with it?
Not only that, like, when you have thousands of staff fired and you have mandates in place in a province, in one province, all of the agency nurses that we pull from, from across Canada, can no longer work here. So you've also shrunk the agency pool in which you can pull from. So it's interesting that they are just sitting to wait.
Yeah, and no, very fair point. And maybe I'll just, to add on to your point about the diversions or the vaccination, sorry, and all that. British Columbia is the last jurisdiction in North America that has COVID restrictions in place requiring vaccination for healthcare workers. We're the only ones in North America. Every other jurisdiction started saying, okay, and their, their medical professionals have said, okay. Every other jurisdiction started saying, okay, and their their medical professionals have said, okay, the COVID vaccine, and we don't have to go down that debate of different ones of that, but they're saying, okay, it's no, it's no longer the way it was. It is now no different than maybe a flu. And so every other jurisdiction has turned around and said, okay, we're going to get rid of all of our mandates and those different restrictions, except British Columbia. Why? I wish I could tell you. Because we've debated this one over and over in the legislature. And every single time, Adrian Dix will stand up and say, I'm doing what's best for the people of British Columbia. That's his answer every time. So I'm just.
It's his boss.
Well, his, well, Adrian Dix's boss would be the premier. The premier decides who's in cabinet, so yeah, David Eby. So I think most people know, but I'll just remind, like, the way government is set up, because sometimes people say to me, well, how come you don't change it, you're in government? Well, I'm actually not in government, I'm in opposition. And I try not to be negative, I try not to be that way. Did I just get a laugh from my wife back there? Yeah. She teases me all the time because when I was actually in government, when I was a minister and when we were the decision makers, my job was to actually be at the table, how do we make things better? What programs can we put in place? Let's talk about it. Now my job, under legislation as an official opposition critic, my job is actually to critique and hold government accountable. I I am one of the ones that, because I've been there for ten years with that experience, I have a good relationship, even though I'm on the different political side, and I think the mayor's seen this as well. I have a good relationship with all the ministers. Because I've always tried to separate policy and person. I don't necessarily agree with NDP politics. But there's still people doing a job and I have to try to if to help this region, I still have to be able to work with them in the hallways or whatever to bring the issues forward, so. And I've been able to get a lot of success in that as well. They won't talk about it publicly because the last thing they want to do is say they helped a region that wasn't theirs, but but we can get the victories sometimes in the back hallways, so. What's another topic you'd like me to cover? I've got a few I'd go into, but.
So we were just talking about sports a while ago. I was just wondering because the shelter here, emergencies, shelter, it's insane. I'm just wondering, is there plans in place for people who need emergency shelter? Are they going to go to Dawson? Or that, or are we not going to have something set up here?
So I hadn't heard that yet, so thank you for sharing that with me. Do you know anything about that either? No, so.
Like where's the shelters?
So can we, I don't want to put anybody in an awkward spot, but if you can connect with me afterwards, I'd really love to hear about that because you know, if if your husband works there, I'd like to know how many people it's serving, why it's closing, is it a funding issue? Is it BC housing? I mean, we can go into that.
Like the BC Housing Society didn't fund them anymore to continue the operation, so. That's why they're hosting, I think their last day is going to be on the third year.
Oh, okay. So I had not heard that. So maybe if you don't mind, if if you're here afterwards, let's talk or or if you have to leave, then maybe if you can connect with me afterwards, I'd really appreciate that.
I can speak to that, it's true.
Okay. I just need more details almost, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I just, if I can get some of some of those details, then that way I can push and find out about it because we were dealing with one in another community right now, the same thing. So the government turns around and says, look at all these people we're helping, but yet they're not funding it. I I I'm having a hard time on that one as well, so. What's another issue that's that I can talk about that people is really close here in Chatwin? Is there anything else that's front and center?
You recommend to have more delay, you should have a town hall more delay.
Yeah, you know what, on that, and I don't want to sound like I'm patting myself on the shoulder, please don't take it that way, but it's one of the things we were talking about with some people coming in. It's the town halls to me are so important. You know, whether it's a large crowd, small crowd, you don't see them a lot anymore. Even talking with a lot of my colleagues, when I put on Facebook, I'm doing all these town halls and like, holy cow, why are you putting yourself out there like that? And I said, well, because I don't like what people just see on Facebook. We don't have media anymore. We don't have a lot of it anyway. We know we'll have Coffee Talk Express or a few groups that try to get some stuff out there. But it's hard to get all of the information now. And I try to share as much as I can on on my Facebook page. When I'm down in Victoria, I try to share our different videos or different things that we're doing. But not everybody sees that either, right? And so it's really important to try to find those different avenues. And you know, I do get some people that come into me and say, well, you know, maybe even tonight, I didn't hear you're doing a town hall meeting. And so, you know, this is, this is one of the things that I'm I'm always looking for advice too of how do we get that information out there? You know, thanks to Peace FM for being here, obviously, to be able to try to share that message as well. But it's not, it's not easy. And I, for those that are on Facebook, I always put the word of caution out there. Because the way all the algorithms work now in social media, you don't see a well-rounded conversation anymore. You only see what you want to, what they want you to see. So, you know, how often do you say, God, I'd like to maybe look at buying a trip to Mexico, I wonder? And then all of a sudden, boom, there's all these ads coming up from Mexico on your phone. But the way those algorithms and the way those work is, if you like a certain thing, you'll actually only start seeing that in your feed. You don't get the news, you don't get the full conversation. And I only flag that because I always challenge a bunch of my buddies to say, if that's all you hear, you forget that there's more out there. And we have to have a conversation about all the issues to try to find, come to a solution, so. Go ahead.
Just speaking of that.
Yeah.
I noticed that the National Citizens Enquirer isn't getting much attention, do you follow that at all?
I don't know.
It's chiseled.
It was accepted.
Yeah.
I'm surprised you didn't.
Yeah.
No, National Citizens Enquirer.
NCI. Okay, it's last winter.
Okay, no, it's not something that's come to me at all. So I'll have to watch for that. Write that down for me. Yeah.
What is it, that one?
National Citizens Enquirer. So no. Oh, it's just my wife, I asked her to write it down so I wouldn't forget. Yeah. Okay, I'll look at that. Yeah, thanks. And and it's back to that, trying to hear all the information. And of course, I think, I hope you can appreciate when when you elect your, as an MLA, I spend about, you know, two hundred and fifty, three hundred days a year, I'm in a hotel down in Victoria representing you. I did a hundred and fifty flights last year. So I don't necessarily, you know, when I'm home, I like to do this kind of stuff, but then I'm down there dealing with all the the noise in Victoria. And as my colleague Dan Davies and I were joking about the other day, and as you saw how it works, Alan, it's a good thing that building's made out of rock and brick because there's a lot of days I want to put my head through the wall. It gets pretty dang frustrating.
Oh, one thing I wonder, what's your take on medical expenses? Like, every time I might have to go dump denture or or take a jaundice, I have appointments there in the place. And all the medications are prescribed, everything else, all all comes out of my pocket. And when I file an income tax, they will not give me any deductions for that. And the reason they give me is you don't pay tax. Well, no, I paid taxes for fifty six bloody years.
Yeah.
And.
Sorry.
I don't get any help from the VA, nobody. And I figure after all the years, the twenty five years I spent in the service overseas and in two days of war going down to Europe. Try to put in working, working in this country. And I'm now a pensioner. And I figure after fifty six years, I should not get a job to make the money so we can duck, duck off my.
Yeah. So for those that couldn't hear, the question was around, you know, supports for. Yeah, supports for seniors, especially when it comes to drugs and stuff. We should have a talk afterwards because there are programs depending on your income, depending, especially if you were in the service, there's usually a lot of programs that I know of. Actually, I could make a phone call tonight and find out. My my mother-in-law used to be the Dominion president in Ottawa for the Legion and took care of all the vets, so I'll look into that.
I fought them since nineteen sixty eight, they just don't propose the files, they won't.
Yeah. I'll do some digging, that something doesn't quite sound right there. Because there are also provincial programs to cover dirt and drugs, so.
Too many, too many civics that work in American affairs, they don't know what we're doing. Give me the clue.
Well, thank you for for your service too, obviously, and for what you did. And I mean, to your point exactly, is there should be the programs in there to help people, especially seniors and especially with the affordability crisis that's going on for everybody right now. So thanks for flagging that for me, I'll look into that for you.
Work with seniors, you know, and I've seen them in stores counting stuff and going through stuff that I maybe pick up and take home feet to pay for that. Because it's outdated stuff, you know, but this, this one, greedy.
Well, one of the things I'll say too, to your, to your point, that I hear a lot too is, you know, because we we struggle getting all of the specific services up in the north here, specialists up in the north here for people in the health services, regardless of what those different services are, and people have to travel. And there's not a lot of supports, financial supports for those people. There's some different programs and there's, you know, some flight programs to help if you have to go to Vancouver. But that's not a lot of times what people are necessarily needing or looking for. And, you know, my political commentary, and we debate Adrian Dix on this, the NDP right now have become such an urban centric party. It's it's all about Vancouver, Surrey, Victoria, Vancouver Island. It's almost like nothing else exists anymore in the rest of the province. And I'm not using that as an excuse when I'm doing my job, but just to highlight, you know, that's what we're up against for us Northern MLAs is, you know, we're one vote and we're down there and we're up against ninety percent of the province lives south of Hope. We only have three hundred thousand people or four hundred thousand people, I can't remember the number we saw, Alan? Because I was at the same conference with with the mayor last week. There's only three, four hundred thousand people live in rural British Columbia, right? Something like that. And the rest, and we're almost six million people in BC now. So that's that's the challenge and we have a government that doesn't understand that there's, that we need supports beyond Hope.
So how can you affect change then?
Well, the most obvious one is get rid of the NDP, but real realistically, well, I mean, so this, and I am being somewhat realistic, and I'm not trying to sound facetious. When people say, oh, my vote doesn't count, it actually damn well does. Because if you don't get the people in there that can actually have a vision, come forward with policy and change to help in that area, then you're stuck with what you got. And that's, so where I say where we can affect change is is in a couple of different areas. Yes, I was saying, get rid of the NDP. The other way, being realistic right now, being in opposition, is I also try to do it in a couple of different ways. Back hallway and like, and that might sound weird, but it really is about how I can form those relationships if they're going to be in government. You know, I'll be out there in global news beating the crap out of Adrian Dix. And then he and I have a good understanding and then I go in the back hallway and say, hey, we got another diversion in Chatwin, what the heck's going on? I need support here, what can we do about it?
And did anything happen with that conversation?
Sometimes, but with with them, and what I'd be by sometimes is, you know, I have sat down with him on this a few times. We have had local governments come down and we look at different solutions, okay, what can we do for policies? We were able to get a, well, and this is where we talked about some of the student loan changes for doctors. But we had one of the doctors, for instance, that agreed to come up here. And we were going to write off his student loans if he agreed to stay for two years and after one year he left and he said, no, I'm leaving. Went back down south and he was walked away from a hundred thousand dollars. So you know, that, we've got a lot of complicated things that we have to to work through. If I look just in the Dawson Creek Hospital alone, when I just met with the Nurses Union there, there's twenty nine vacancies in that hospital for nurses, right? So that's a challenge. I know here in Chatwin, we had one of the nurses that ended up leaving, obviously, and that was replaced with a physician. There was a whole bunch of different complicated things around that one. And so we need to be looking at those. I don't think that people are talking about the, remember when I said at the beginning that when a doctor leaves, a new doctor comes in? One of the challenges under the College of Physicians, when a doctor is put in their service after two, three years, they can see up to twenty four hundred patients. But a new doctor is only allowed to see eight hundred. So you might replace a doctor for a doctor, but you're not replacing the amount of patients they can see equivalent. So if we're losing that doctor, you almost need three doctors to replace them under the present system that the government has put in place, so.
Do you ever have conversations with other unions outside of the Nurses Union? Because I think that like there's a lot of focus on the nurses themselves, which are very important, but housekeepers are fired, lab techs, sonographers, x-ray techs. And when you have a nurse that's worked twelve plus hours and there's a trauma and there's blood all over the floor, the last thing she wants to do is clean it up because the housekeeper was fired. So is there ever any conversation with like HEU or HSA or any of those?
Yeah, we meet with them too. I mean, the Nurses Union, I I focus on that one because of course that's where a lot of our gaps are right now in in the health profession and doctors, of course, but doctors aren't part of a union, they're part of a College of Physicians. So yeah, we do meet with them. I I will honestly say not as often. The and I, the reason why I say that is as as associations, HEU we do. But the the Nurses Union is a very well-established, well-run union. And they're, they have a great lobby part of their group. And they've, we've formed great relationships with them and the relationships are also really important. I mean, they, they've got my cell number, they phone me and say, hey, what about that, you know? So so it's a good flag though as well. Doctors, for people who don't know, doctors aren't employed by the health authorities. Doctors are employed by the ministry. So a lot of people, I didn't know that when I first got involved in this too. So their their special contractors, all doctors are private business people, right? They don't work for the health authority. They don't answer technically the health authority, they have to follow, obviously, the health guidelines within that. And they have to work with the health authority when it comes to surgical times that they need or ER times, et cetera. But they get paid for and answered through the College of Physicians to the Ministry of Health directly, so. Another complicated piece of the healthcare systems.
Just a question, Vivis, a question on retention, the nurses might prefer that retention. Retention is a very big thing here. So what are, what is the vision? What what our community is pointing, drive it home for the people to want to.
Exactly. I wish I could blame Northern Health completely on this, but I think we all need to look at this issue collectively. And the reason why I say that is we just, even with some of the physicians that are leaving, we just did like an exit interview and I, so I met with some of them. And I also met with some of the nurses that were leaving. The main reason they all flagged was lack of childcare. Every single one of them, that was the number one thing they said was lack of childcare. And so that's where I say, I think as communities, we have to all be looking at this issue too. Some of them said it was housing. A couple of the physicians, their big thing is they said it was their network, that they came here, they loved being here. And when I say here, I mean the Peace Region, not specifically just Chatwin. But they never felt like they were part of the community. Because especially when they're coming from a foreign country. You know, we looked at, for a long time, we had a lot of doctors all coming from South Africa. Well, that was because the first couple that came from South Africa told their buddies, hey, I'm here, you can choose Dawson Creek or choose Chatwin or or Tumblerridge, and so they would. But then when their contracts were up and two or three of the of those doctors from South Africa left, the next ones, when their contract were up, well, they left too. And they're all still together because that was their network, their family network, their, you know, system. So that's another challenge and that's why Northern Health and the College of Physicians has started to reach out to try to broaden how they're recruiting. But yeah, I was really surprised when, I guess it's an obvious, but especially from the nurses, when they said, you know, healthcare, to come up here and work in healthcare, if you don't have the daycare, it's hard. Because if they come up here and their husband's, let's say, working in the oil patch or forestry, whatever they're doing, they want to go to work, they don't have daycare, what do they do?
So you did touch on that, he's exit interviews, so are they always done? Because the next, you will get more information from exit interview to move forward with that, so are they always done at the proper level?
So I'll give you my anecdote from what they told me. So I'd like to say yes, but I don't, I can't say yes, right? Because I know in most of the government jobs, there's supposed to be exit interviews when they leave.
Often to a superior direct, so there should be always a chain.
Yeah, so the the way they explained it to me, for instance, when the doctors are leaving, you have the, you have the the chief of medicine for the hospital or for the South Peace. When a doctor's leaving, they always have the meeting because he puts in his notice. My contract's up in six months, because they're always supposed to do that six months. My contract's up in six months, because they're always supposed to do in that six month window. Are you going to renew your contract? Yes or no? How does that look? And if it's a no, why not? And then they always have that. So it's undone at that level and then it's, I'm told, then it's, that's all shared through the College, College of Physicians through in their internal network. How that works through Northern Health, I don't know. Like how that gravitates up that chain, because it's a little separate. The nurses told me a lot of that's done through their liaison they have with Northern Health and then the head of the Nurses Union locally. It's supposed to happen all, all the time, whether it does or not, obviously, I can't say. Yeah, I was there for this one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's important because when I met with Northern Health on Monday, that was one of the things that I specifically asked them to start keeping me in the loop on, was when people are leaving, I want to know why, right? Because I think collectively, if it, not, not to make easy solutions, because they're not always easy. But if the challenge is that we have, I'm just going to make up numbers here, three nurses in town that are struggling to find daycare, and if we can't find daycare, they're going to leave, I can all but guarantee we will come up with a solution to find daycare, right? It's, as a community, we'll figure that out, right? But if we don't know, how do we fix it? And sometimes we don't know and the decision's been made to leave and then we find out afterwards, right? So I think we need to do a better job on that one for sure.
Well, I can ask a question about investment in B.C. The ref's conference, and there wasn't very good numbers to invest in B.C. Versus investing us being forestry and coal mine.
Yep.
And oil and gas, our numbers weren't good. We spent $20 in B.C., we get a negative $20 back. We invest $20 and we get, they get 900%.
Yeah.
So, you know, investing in something that's going the negative way, like we're, it doesn't look good, but we can't get investors in B.C. From B.C. to invest in B.C.
Exactly.
We're talking about West Fraser, Canfor, Holcove, getting these big force companies. You know, we can't get them to invest. They'd rather invest somewhere where they can make money, which is,
Exactly.
It's good business because anybody knowing anything about dollar, you don't invest in a negative.
So you and I, you and I saw that at the conference. So let me maybe spend a little time on this. So the question was really around, how do we get people to invest or are we getting investment in the province of British Columbia? And specifically whether it's forestry or the resource sector. Let me back up a little bit as I'm answering your question, Alan. If you think back, I, I look back when I was in government and the support that we put into the resource sector or just how that all worked. Under our time, three big major projects hit the province of British Columbia. Site C, Trans Mountain Pipeline, Trans, uh, Trans Mountain Pipeline, sorry, and then LNG Canada and the pipeline for that. Collectively pushing close to $100 billion worth of investment, close to 50,000 people employed. Guess what's ending in the province of British Columbia in the next 12 months? LNG Canada, Trans Mountain Pipeline, Site C. What are the next three projects? What's the next one project? When we talk about, to Mayor's point about where's that investment? People are nervous about the province of British Columbia right now because there's no certainty on that investment. And we heard it at the forestry conference. If, when you're answering to a board of directors, right or wrong, this is how business works. When you're answering to a board of directors, the first thing the board wants to say is if we're going to give you $100 million to invest in a plant in Chetwyn, can you guarantee me that we're going to have access to fiber? That we're going to get the permits that we need, that we're going to have the staff we need so we can make a return on our, on our investment? Because nobody's at that level, nobody's investing that kind of money unless they can show a return on their investment for their shareholders. That's business. I spent 25 years in the oil and gas sector and I was a manager in that sector for quite a while. I dealt with Calgary all the time. And trying to do the sales pitch to Calgary for oil and gas, the first question they said is, will we get our permits? Will we have the staff? Will we be able to get our product out of the ground? You know, of course, there's all the global economic impacts on, on lumber prices and oil and gas and all that. But separately from that, if there was not certainty on that investment, they would go somewhere where there is. So unfortunately, and I know how hard it impacted Chetwyn here, when Canfor had to make the decision to shut this down. They're investing more money down south and we heard it from West Fraser. We've heard it from all these companies that they're investing in the United States right now because they know when they invest, there's a return on their investment. But it's, the reason why they're getting the return on the investment is because when they apply for a permit, they're getting it. Sometimes the answer is no, but at least they get an answer. We have right now for timber sales, I'm the forestry shadow minister right now, so I know this a little bit and I'm learning more every single day. But when you look at the annual allowable cut and they're only hitting about 40% of that target. We have some of our timber zones in the province that have actually not had a timber sale for almost two years. And the companies are phoning me saying, we're on the doorstep of having to close because how do we keep open if we can't get the logs coming in? That's the logistics and the simplicity of it. If we can't cut down the trees, we can't keep our mills open. And so to the Mayor's point, I just looked at the last budget for the province of British Columbia. And when I said when I used to be in government, we had almost $8 billion a year that used to come into general revenues from the government and taxation from the resource sector specifically. We're now down to just a couple of billion dollars. You've probably, for those that follow me, you'll hear, I use the term all the time, this government's managing the decline of the resource sector, rather than supporting it and promoting it to grow it. Because I've always used the analogy, if you want a new school or a new hospital, then let's have a mill. Because where do you think the people are coming from? Where do you think the taxation's coming from? We have a government right now that's getting majority of their taxation from other sectors and they promote the tech sector, they promote the movie industry, that's fine. But I always try to remind them, when you're in the, in the legislature in British Columbia, the pictures depicted around the hallway are the forestry sector, the fishing industry, the agricultural sector, the mining sector, because that's what built our province. And we have huge opportunity. And we heard that at our conference. We have huge opportunity in these sectors. But the companies don't want to invest right now because they're nervous under the present government. And yes, that's a dig to the NDP because they're, for whatever reason, they just don't support these sectors. They don't. And we're even seeing it now of all places on Vancouver Island. I met a couple of, I guess it was a month ago, with the United Steelworkers, who represents members all across Vancouver Island that work in the mills, who are frustrated as heck because those mills are starting to shut down. And they, you said to me, we always voted NDP because they were the man of the, or the party of the worker. Well, that's gone. That's not happening anymore. It's, like I said, they're an urban centric party. So, so I'm trying not to sound pessimistic. The optimism there is we have the resources, we have the opportunity, we have the skill set, we have companies that want to invest. We just have to have policies in place and leadership in place to say, okay, let's do this. You know, I remember Christie Clark and how passionate she was about LNG. You know, she went corner to corner and she got beat up a lot from people from the environmental movement around LNG. But she stuck to her guns on that because she said, this is the right thing to do, not only for British Columbia and this peace region, but globally around what we can offer. So to your, to your point, we have huge opportunity. We have to get over this hurdle of the resistance of government to make a decision. That's the problem.
We have housing, housing prices. We have the drug prices, we have the health prices, and we haven't solved any of them. Our housing crisis stems from building with fiber products. But here we just have this issue of closing down mills. We're going to buy in the states where they put a tariff on our wood to sell in the states. But we're going to buy back from them to build our houses in B.C. If we have the resource to buy back. If nobody's investing in B.C., how will we afford work from United?
You know, you're almost word for word, you must have watched my last speech in the legislature. Because my, my last speech was starting off just like you said. We have gone from a government that used to be tops in everything to having a housing crisis, a health crisis, an affordability crisis, like everything. And the problem is even government acknowledges it, it's all a crisis. And they always say, but we have more work to do. Well, no, no. I, I always wonder what the, I, I'm not a conspiracy theorist person, I'm not that person. But I always wonder what the alter, the alternative could be compared to what they're trying to achieve. Because when you start talking about how do we shut down our province, what, why? What are we trying to accomplish here, right? And that's what it feels like. It, it feels like this whole, well, one of the ministers actually said that, well, if they don't have the supports, I'll use Chetwyn as an example. Well, you know, if a mill shuts down in Chetwyn and more people have to move to Vancouver, that's fine. That's where the services are anyway. That's their mindset. How do we get people in the bigger cities? Sure feels that way, doesn't it? Sure feels that way. But we all choose to live here for a reason, right? So that's why we have to also fight for it.
The Marshall found that Green B.C., you read that, you have to dig deep into that.
Green B.C.
Green B.C.
Green B.C.
Right, when you have those Marshall's and then you have to dig into it to, to find out the recent algae, yeah, forestry and all that. There's stuff in there that needs to come out, not just that we're going to go green. That this is the Green B.C., right? So there's other things that are going to be done to that Green B.C. portfolio that they have to make us change so that we all move to Vancouver.
So, so what the Mayor is referring to is, he's a Green B.C. And it's also the Clean B.C. official policy that the NDP put forward. If you haven't heard this, I'll just spend a second on this because this does impact us as well. What the government has said is that we have to be basically off fossil fuels by 2035. Every vehicle in the province of British Columbia that will be sold has to be electric by 2035. Anything three-quarter ton or less, this is what they think is achievable. They want to, as, you know, it gets all part of reducing carbon emissions. Our carbon emissions have never been higher and they go up every year. But for some reason, this is their vision. We're, you know, Clean B.C., Green B.C. Let me put that in perspective for you. So we're just finishing off Site C, just over around 1,200 megawatts of power. In order to electrify just our vehicles, when I, we did the data on this, just to electrify our vehicles in the province of British Columbia, we need about 13,000 more megawatts of power. So remember, Site C's 1,200. And somehow in the next 10 years, we're going to have 13,000 more? And nobody's going to have anything but electric vehicles? I mean, it sounds pretty, yeah, anyway. Of course, we voted against that. We think it's crazy. But, but the government or the NDP right now in such a position where they're just confident, they figure they're riding through this and they're going to be able to push this stuff through, so.
They've never cared about Northern B.C. anyways. It's pretty obvious. Our roads and everything are saying it for us. If you come from Kamloops up this way, you could tell by our highways how they are compared to theirs, so.
Yeah, and, and you're right. It's all like when we talk about transportation infrastructure, we talk about all that stuff. It's, I know when I was looking at the budget just for the South Peace here, we used to have somewhere in the vicinity of about $50 million a year in the annual budget for road maintenance, road repairs, you name it, operational capital in the South Peace. When the NDP came in, they dropped that down to 26 million, from 50 to 26. So is there an impact? Absolutely. And this is one of the things that we're always trying to push. And I know, you know, Mayor and councils in all the communities, they bring up resolutions at UBCM about the investment and these are the things we're pushing for, obviously, right? And, you know, that's, that's why I made my little snippet comment to you, get rid of the government. But, but frankly, when we have a government that's only worried about the South, that's unfortunately what we get. So, and I apologize, you had a question.
No worries. I was just wondering what you know about Agenda 23, if you support it? And if you think that impacts what is happening down in Vancouver area where they, you know, aren't open to industry and stuff like that?
I'll be honest, I don't, I've heard of it. I don't follow, I know a lot of that kind of stuff when I'm dealing with stuff in Victoria. What I will say is we have a government in Victoria who listens to, you know, they're not part of all of, I see some of the stuff on Facebook, they're not part of Ottawa, but they're not part of WEF, they're not part of all, any of that stuff. And I, I can say that with all sincerity. What they are part of is listening to an environmental movement mostly, okay? So when I walk to the legislature every day, almost every single day that I walk in there, I'm walking through a protest. Stop logging, stop oil and gas, stop, oh, of course. Well, the foresters are, the one stopping forestry is the wooden sign. The oil and gas people have a Coroplast plastic sign. They all drove in their cars and hit them behind the corner. I, I wish I was kidding, but it's true. I was actually at a protest in downtown, not part of the protest, I saw a protest in downtown Vancouver where they barricaded around a gas station to try to protest gasoline. And one of the people was shuttling all of the people, the protesters that were showing up in their cars and showing them where to park to come for the protest. Isn't that, again, I wish I was joking. You can't make this stuff up.
Let us tell them they're paid, they're paid.
Oh, and, and they are. And we've got data to prove that, that we have paid protesters. A lot of them, and I, and we, and there's proof on this, I don't want to go too far down this one. It's not really provincial issue, but it does bother me. There is proof that a lot of these protesters that come up to British Columbia to protest forestry, oil and gas and mining are paid for by American forestry, oil and gas and mining companies. Right? Why? Because we're impacting their business. When we were trying to do LNG and more LNG projects, you know, and we're seeing all these American protesters coming up and you follow the money. You know, you follow a lot of these Sierra Clubs, David Suzuki Foundations, whatever, and look at where they get their funding from, right? Yeah, and so that there obviously gets me a little perturbed. You know, we had, we had one of the people in, in Victoria, who was one of the housing advocates living in a tent after they got out of their BMW over in the corner and walked into their tent to stay there for a week with their, you know, we need to support homeless people, right? Again, wish I was making this up.
Seems like she's offering her room in your house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So one of the things I'll, I'll flag on too, and if there's questions, please just jump in. You know, we talked about the certainty and, you know, we talked about the budget. I don't know if you knew this part, and I think it's really important when we talk about what impacts us all. When I left government, one of the things as a, as a conservative that I am, I always pushed, how do we balance budgets? How do we make sure we're responsible for taxpayers' dollars? And we ran year after year balanced budgets. At that time, it was Mike DeYoung was our finance minister who just actually announced today, he's decided he's not running for us again because he has got tapped. He's running for Poliev for the federal conservatives in Abbotsford. So he'll be a big loss to our team because he's an amazing articulate guy, especially on the finance side. But, so we used to balance our budgets and in 2016, 17, when we got taken out by the NDP Green Coalition, don't get me going on that one. We also left the NDP with a $2 billion surplus and a balanced budget and we were debt free. When I say debt free, I mean operational debt free. You always have some capital floating debt when you're building hospitals and schools and that, it's a little different. So we had about a $50 billion capital debt and we had a zero operating debt. We paid it off because in 2001, when, when our party took over from the NDP, there was about a $13 billion operating deficit because they just kept putting things on the credit card. It took us 15 years, but we paid off all of that, made British Columbia debt free. We had a triple A credit rating, balanced budgets, and we had the strongest economy in Canada, in British Columbia. Within five years, that's all gone. The budget that they just presented this year at the beginning of this session is an additional $9 billion deficit on top of the, I think it was 12 billion that they already had in the year before. We're now going to be, so remember, I said in 2001, there was about 12, 13 billion dollar deficit that the NDP did over 10 years. In the last five years, we're going to be over 20 billion in deficit. And they have almost tripled our capital debt. We are going to be in this fiscal plan up to 140, I think it is, billion dollars in debt. On top, and that's capital on top of the operating deficit. So I used to stand in the legislature and say, if we go into debt like this, it's going to be our grandkids paying it off. I'm looking at the numbers, it's now our great-grandkids. I'm looking at the numbers, it's now our great-grandkids. You know, and, and I hate to see, I don't know how we can afford four more years of this because it's deficit after deficit. So when we stood up in the House and we challenged them this year in the budget, what's your plan to get back to balanced budgets? Their actual answer is the public doesn't care about budgets anymore. They don't care if they're balanced. What services do they want? And as you would know as local government, uh, that doesn't usually fly. Uh, you can't just say we're going to go into massive debt and not provide things for it. And so that's where we've always been pushing. How can you go so far into debt, yet the outcomes and services are worse? You know, where's this money going? What are we doing here? Um, so we definitely need to be, uh, pushing harder and looking at that too. Of course, we, we do what we can in, in bills, we vote against what the NDP is doing, vote against the budget. They have a full majority now, so of course they win every, every single thing. But I wanted to flag that because as I was talking about, you know, the, the money we used to get from resource development, now it's gone down to billions. They've projected just in forestry, mining and oil and gas, another billion dollar loss in the next three years that they're expecting because they're not supporting the industries. So where's the money coming from? You know, I've got little leprechauns in the basement printing it, I don't know. Um, but we're, it's, it's scary, I hate to say, right? And I'm going to hear from my wife again, you're always negative. Sorry, I thought, I saw a hand.
I'm wondering what you would suggest to the community here tonight as individuals?
Yeah.
And how much faith you have that BC can turn around? And what we can do as taxpaying citizens to, to do something instead of just watch a tank?
Yeah, no, and thank you. I mean, and that is, I think that's the important thing. We, we can't just let it go the way it's going and watch it tank. Uh, and yes, there's opportunities, of course, there's opportunities and some things can't be fixed overnight, but a lot of things can be fixed. Uh, and it's back to, um, having good policy, uh, a government, and yes, I'll sound political here, but it's a government that governs for all of British Columbia, not just a portion of it. Right? Yeah. You, uh, Gordon, uh, sorry, um, well, uh, last election, the NDP never left the lower mainland. They publicly said that they were going to campaign where the votes are because they know that that's all they have to do to win. Uh, whereas our party is split about 50/50. Half of our members, like myself, represent rural parts of the province. Half of our members represent urban. And it was even like that when we were in government. Now, it's not the heydays of 2001 when we won, uh, that some people will remember where we won all but two seats. Uh, we won 77 of 79 seats in 2001 from the NDP. The problem was after that, and, and the reason why that happened, first of all, let me say, is Gordon Campbell did a great job of amalgamating all the parties together and saying, we have to stop splitting the votes. Because if you link back into the heydays of the Socrate days, everybody worked together. And it kept the socialist governments, NDP governments out for, uh, you know, 20, 30 years. As soon as those votes start splitting again, guess what happens? The NDP win. So the NDP won all the seats, uh, majority of the seats in the 1990s. Gordon Campbell convinced everybody, the Conservatives, the Liberals, the Socrats, the Reforms, we need to all work together. Otherwise, we're going to be having another four years of the NDP. So they all worked together and we got in, uh, and lasted for, uh, 16 years. I will sound a little pointed and crass on this. In 2016, we would have stayed in government, but we lost seven seats. And those were the seven ridings that the BC Conservatives ran candidates in. They decided, let's do a little comeback. Well, their comeback lost us, our government, and put the NDP in. And they, the BC Conservatives haven't governed or won a seat or done anything since 1926, just to put things in perspective. It's been 100 years. But they've always been spoilers when they've ran. Typically have never gotten more than about one or two percent. They're riding high in the polls right now provincially because of the confusion, the last poll that just went out. The first question in the poll was, who do you think would make the better Prime Minister? Poliev, Trudeau, or Jagmeet Singh? You know who most people suggested. The next question is if there was an election in British Columbia, would you vote Conservative, united, or NDP? Um, there's a reason why I met with these pollsters and the poll, don't believe polls, first of all. In 2013, we were 30% behind in the polls and we won a majority government. Adrian Dix was supposed to win his premier that year. But it is, it is something that you'll hear me talk about, um, is if we cannot keep parties together, um, right or wrong, people can have their own opinions. But every single time in provincial history, the NDP will win if we can't stick together. That's just like, so, yeah, sorry, I got on a rant there. The, but the big thing is where I'm going really is, is how do we locally? I wish it was a silver bullet, okay? There isn't. Elections do matter, okay? Um, I'll continue doing what I can to represent the area, obviously, but it's working collectively. I have a great working relationship with mayor and council here, with the regional district, uh, with Bob Zimmer, and it's all about, you know, we need to be united on that, that voice as well. So I think as, as local people, there's a couple of things. Please share your stories with me. And the reason being is because I share those in Victoria. Um, I can do it attributed or not. But if I don't have the exact stories with the data, and by that I, I, you know, I, I don't go and say, when somebody says, oh, I heard on Facebook, well, you know, I can't use that story. But if somebody says, we have a place shutting down because it's lack of funding and here's the email to prove it, I can take that. So that's something that definitely works locally is, you know, making sure we have that relationship and giving me that information as well. Uh, elections obviously matter. They truly do. And I think it's also, it's also the little nuances of even whether it's the healthcare, whether it's industry, it's about selling our communities. It's, uh, I, I do honestly, as a former mayor, I do believe there's a lot that we can do to promote and sell our communities as a great place to live, great opportunity, uh, because it is here and we shouldn't let the South control our narrative. Right? So there's all, I mean, there's all the things that we do locally, volunteering in groups, you know, hospital foundations, uh, community, other community service groups, Crime Stoppers, I mean, there's all those kinds of things that we can do locally. Those are all important parts from a local perspective. Um, but really, and then I'm, I'm your guy that's fighting for you on the provincial stuff.
And you put motions forward and they keep voting them down?
Yes.
Is there any movement forward?
So the question was, when I, when I or we put motions forward and the NDP vote them down, how do we move forward? Yeah, is there any movement forward? No. Uh, to be, to be blunt and crass, when you have a majority government, that's unfortunately how it works. I stood up in the legislature last week, um, on one of the motions I had, and I actually said, I don't care if you take this as your idea. Make it your bill. If you don't want to pass mine for political reasons, you know, because we've put forward a lot of ideas as the opposition. Uh, a lot of times we'll try to go to an NDP bill and say, we can't support it as is, so we want to amend it. And if you add this line and this line or take this part out, now we'll support it. This is where the crass parts of politics comes in, right? Because, because it was our idea, they just don't want it. And so when you say, does it move forward? Unfortunately, it really doesn't at that time. But what we do is we put it in our bank and we put it in our platform and say, look, we tried to present this, the NDP voted it down. If we get elected, we'll bring it back and it'll be our piece of legislation that we will pass. So it's not like it's gone, but my biggest frustration, and, and my wife always reminds me, don't ever sound like you're complaining about this because you voluntarily run and put your name on the ballot. Uh, but one of my biggest frustrations is really that, uh, it's like turning the Titanic, uh, dealing with government, the bureaucracy, the red tape that we need to work through. Uh, when we were in government, we used to have a policy and a minister whose job was to remove red tape so we could do decisions, put bills forward and make things happen faster. And nobody has, nobody has the torch saying, I'm the only person that has good ideas. And so I think government of any stripe should be listening to anybody's ideas and if it's a good one, they should be passing it. Right now, we have a government that's not. I don't remember if we ever did, so maybe it's not just them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So like when I hear things, when you say that the government just won't agree with me because it's your idea and shut something down. If that motion could save people's lives and they're shutting it down, how is government held accountable? Because to me, if you're killing people, that's murder and you're just saying, oh, we don't like this because it's your idea. Like at what point does government actually become accountable for their actions such as killing people?
So.
And, you know, drugs and firing healthcare staffs and people are dying in the healthcare system and suffering, like it's death and suffering. At what point are they held accountable?
So the, so the, the question is, when is government held accountable? The challenge with your question is the very obvious one, is they're held accountable at election time? Because that's the way our parliamentary system works. Then.
Because that's such a huge flaw in the system to me.
The, so the, the, the issue around whether government is doing something illegal or not is a, is an interesting one because the way the governments typically, typically, well, governments make the laws. Right? So when you put that in, government, uh, government controls everything in our lives in one way or another, right? Absolutely everything. And we can have an argument whether that's right or wrong, that's, that's, that's our constitutional, uh, the way we're set up in Canada and the United States and Europe and some places that are not, uh, part of the communist side. So interestingly, in a democratic society that we have, uh, that's the way we're set up. Uh, one of the, I think it was Churchill, uh, coined the phrase that, you know, this democracy that we have is the worst form of government except other forms of government that have ever been tried. Right? And so is it perfect? Absolutely not. Um, and this is, you know, we're always looking at how do we try to make things better? I mean, I wish, you know, it's, if I was premier or if I was prime minister, it'd be a different answer. Uh, from a, from a political perspective though, it's how do we work within the system to try to make proper change to help people? Right? Your point is completely valid though, which is why, for instance, when we made the motion of, we've got to stop decriminalization, we have to start having services to help people, we shouldn't be allowing people to just do open drug use everywhere. Um, we shouldn't be having a catch and release program where, you know, somebody gets caught, almost in some cases murder, and they're out on the streets a week later. The problem is, is all these systems are in crisis right now and they need change, right? Uh, so I would def, I'm not, uh, disagreeing with your point, let's just say. It is, it is very frustrating because this, um, you know, we, we look at the opportunities that we do have and we're letting them slip by. And we have governments right now that are, whatever reason, burying their heads in the sand and, and not really, uh, looking at what they can do to actually, to your point, help people. Right? They say they are, um, but we don't see it, see it happening, uh, in many areas, right? And, and so, yeah, we, there's definitely opportunities that were, I think are being missed and have to be worked on. Does anybody, uh, any other topics that anybody wanted me to cover or?
Could we start a heritage, maybe a trust fund?
Or, or.
Well, these, um, Tim Burridge.
You know, it's, uh, it's a very good point. So it's like a heritage trust, uh, that they have in Alberta, which has worked for years. Obviously, there's been some challenges with that as well, uh, lately from what I've been reading. But here's the problem. First of all, it's hard to have a heritage trust when you're in debt. I agree with you, right? It's, uh, it, it would be like saying, I'm going to start up a tax-free savings account while I'm bankrupt. Uh, you know, I've racked up five credit cards and I've fore, they've foreclosed on my house, but I'm going to start up a trust fund for my, myself, you know? That's where British Columbia is and that's the, that's what we have to try to work on as well, right? Uh, and that happens if we can grow our economy, if we can build the, the resource sector in that economy. I, I don't want to sound pessimistic, but when we say, what can we do, uh, uh, local people, what can we do is, you know, back to selling the community, having these meetings and pushing hard because I'm worried about Wes Fraser next. Right? We've already lost one mill here. What do we do to make sure we don't lose another? Um, and so there's, you know, what can we do as a community? We got to be out there pushing, uh, as well to say, how do we get these permits? What are the opportunities here that we're, we're letting go by? Uh, you know, so if we can solve some of those issues so we can get the revenue coming back in, then God knows, we could get back to having some kind of trust. And I, I think we were getting there, uh, when I said like in 2016, when we got to the point where we paid off the provincial debt and we had a $2 billion surplus, we were now at that point, we were saying, we have money in the bank, AAA credit rating, we were saving money. We've now lost that AAA credit rating, we're a double A, a double A minus, I think now in the province of BC. And that's all happened in the last six months. What people don't talk about or the government doesn't talk about, that means it's about a billion and a half dollars extra a year in interest that we have to come up with money for. So, so it's hard, your point is awesome. I'd love to be where you say, where we have things growing, where we can actually put money in the bank, but I think we have to get to the point where we're paying off our bills first. So, sorry, I thought I saw a hand. Maybe I didn't. Nope. So, um, I didn't look at the time. I didn't want to keep people all night, obviously. I just really appreciate, oh, I said I was going to go to 8:30, it's already 10 to 9. Hey, thank you. But I, I really want to thank you for coming out. Uh, but here's, here's one thing I, I really want to ask you too is, you know, I, I do come out to Chatwin as often as I can. Uh, I've been, I really try to stand up for Chatwin and, and Chatwin's always been very supportive of me and I thank you for that. Uh, we have a month left in Victoria, so like I said, I'm only home for the next couple of days and then I'm gone for another month. Uh, and then come June, uh, I'm back home in the riding. In saying that though, I am always just a phone call away. I have my office, I've got my email, uh, I've got some information at the back if you want to grab that. Uh, some of it's political, uh, for the election because I, I am running again, uh, in the election this year. I wasn't going to, I wanted to make this more MLA focused. This is not a political, me running again kind of speech. Uh, I wanted to focus more on that and the issues because in the meantime, I still am representing you and trying to stand up for what our concerns are. Uh, and that's why, to me, I really thank you for coming out because, uh, if we don't have the discussions on what's important to you, uh, I, I don't want to make sure when I'm standing up in Victoria that I'm actually saying what's important for everybody. And one of the things that I have learned in politics unfortunately is every time you make a decision, you made somebody happy, you've probably made somebody upset. Uh, and that's the, the nature of this, but, um, as you're leaving, uh, you know, I'll stay for a few moments, uh, please grab my business card or information at the back. If you have other questions that you want to talk about, just please give me a phone call or connect with my office, uh, when I come back into Chatwin. I've got no problem meeting people privately. Um, I did a couple of private meetings this afternoon before I came here tonight. Uh, I love doing those one-on-ones as well, if there's things that are important to you or if you just want to get together for dinner or coffee. I love doing that as well, uh, to talk, talk about the issues. So, um, thank you for coming out. Thank you, worship and councillor for being here as well. And again, thank you for that relationship because I think collectively we'll just keep working and I'll see you in Smithers if you're going at the, uh, NCLGA conference. So, uh, thanks everyone for coming out. I hope I at least answered some questions tonight. Appreciate your time. Thank you. I hope I at least answered some questions tonight. Appreciate your time. Thank you.